Folks, this is Ray. And I just wanted to give a shout out to one of the people who helped make us, helped let us make this possible to bring you things of community interest like Commissioner's Court. It's the Shepherd Insurance Agency for your auto, home, and commercial, and more insurance. And their number is 936-2628-AUTO, or that is 936-628-2886. Tell them Ray sent you. Thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, one and indivisible. Under Texas law, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
God bless you guys. Lord, thank you for giving us this beautiful day and this time, facility to meet in and do the county's business. Lord, I pray that everything that we do will be honoring you and pleasing unto you, Lord. Lord, that you bless Commissioner Sweeney and whatever health issues he's having this morning. Lord, thank you for the many blessings you've given us and forgive us at first standings in your name and pray. Amen.
Amen.
On item number four, Mr. Dieter.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
It's kind of a sad situation, but I'm going to be forced to take time to discuss and leave everything up to my reliable colleague. I'm getting ready to undergo a non-invasive brain surgery. And after that fact, it's going to take a while for recuperation. I'm going to have to learn how to walk and keep my bowing. Yeah, yeah. They're not going to injure me, but my head's going to be heated with laser.
Are you, Mr. Dieter?
And the reason for it is I have a tremor. And the tremor gets the best of me and has for 11 years. And this is a solution, hopefully. No guarantees. There is risk involved, and the risk is impossible brain bleeding. But that's the worst of it. So I enlist your prayers, and I know that you'll keep on keeping on. And I will see you back as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ray. Mr. Dieter, you know I'm going to miss you. And you just take care of yourself.
Thank you.
Ray, keep us informed.
Is there... All right, next, if we have no other public comment, we'll turn to item number five, an possible discussion of public or community items of public or community interest for which no action will be taken. We got our August 27th budget hearing, public hearing on the budget. And then we've already, you gotta have that, you gotta do the, pass the budget and approve the rate to pass the budget within seven days. So that will be set for September the 2nd. The open meetings regulations have been changed by legislature. It's not, the fact of September 1st, you no longer can get away with sending two hours. You have to get three full business days, so... And that means the weekends, you don't count in your three-day notice. You don't count holidays. So the, I think that caused me to file the agenda yesterday for the August 27th meeting. And then left to do the same, but next Tuesday, I'll post the one for September 2nd because you got a weekend and Labor Day is in there. So I gotta count Friday, Thursday, Wednesday, so that'd be next Tuesday. I'll post it on the 26th. If I'm not there before 30, yeah, call me because it'll have slipped my mind. So anyway... Can I see the chief's lead?
He's in that foyer.
You summon him? I've got something I want to tell him about. Chief... Anybody see our, the county has, the sheriff's department has secured the Operation Lone Star grant. We're in the middle of it, of the first one that we were awarded. One of the things that we acquired with that was a license plate reader sitting out here last week. Regarding the license plate reader, I got your email late yesterday evening. I called Austin because I went on there to log in, and it wouldn't, I couldn't certify the adjustment. And I said, "I come, this won't let me do that." Well, you have an agreement regarding your license plate reader use. And I flicked on it, the form I pulled up is not signed, but he sent me the agreement with Colonel Freeman. But they're gonna hold on the funding because of the confirmation from the local DPS. I called sergeant this morning, we sent him an email copy with it.
That is who I was on the phone with just now.
Okay. I sent him a copy of the signed agreement. So, because we're getting down, we need to, you know...
Well, I don't know nothing about what you're, he never told me about that. So I will, I will have that.
Of course, I didn't know anything either. And he said, "Well, you gotta have email confirmation." And I said, "Well, I asked up, I knows the sergeant." He said, "That's exactly it."
I will have that answered today.
Sergeant didn't know anything about it either.
He did that.
I sent him the form, and he's supposed to just send him an email confirmation, is what he said.
Well, I'm gonna attach, he's gonna send me the email. I'm gonna copy the email, attach that to our grant, so it's in there. And then I'll call him and tell him it's attached in there.
But he needs to physically send the email.
I'll send it to him also.
Yeah.
I would do both.
I didn't know what other, other forms we've... You have something that you wanted to talk about on item number five regarding, or is that, that's not on the agenda, isn't it?
Well, some of y'all got something, and some of y'all, I don't know if you guys...
About the 100th lot.
Yeah, that's that 100th lot. I just wanted to make sure y'all know that we did, I did receive a confirmation that they are purchasing all of our vests for us. And everything's on the go. They got somebody in their office. Matter of fact, yesterday, today, it's measuring everybody to get fitted.
Forty-six new ballistic vests worth $55,090, 76 assesses, outstanding.
Thank you all. What a good job.
Yeah, thanks to the 100th lot.
Yes, thank you too.
May I say something else to the public?
Sure, sure.
All right, we also are receiving, once I get all the paperwork done and processed and everything, we're also going to receive, because right now, we're using somebody else's dog. And it's this person, we're gonna get rid of that. K94Cops in Houston has granted us a new service dog also, for free, and all the training for free. And once I get all that paperwork and all that done, we'll submit that, and we can accept that dog and all the training. And we have all that set up, so.
We work on y'all's end. Wonderful.
Yes, and what we're gonna do on that is, the only thing they ask us to do is advertise for them. Basically, take pictures and tell them, "Hey, look what your dog did today, look what your dog did." And if that's all they want from us, we're happy to oblige.
My great job, y'all did.
Yes, thank you. I have a ton of stuff, so whenever y'all get...
I'm trying to hand you something.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if we've done one of these, but looking for things that we needed to make, see that button a little while until they release it, but I don't know if we've done that, that agreement. But I think it's me and the sheriff speaking. Sheriff, he said that wasn't really pressing, so just take that.
You want me to fill this all out?
Yeah, yes.
Do we need to wait for Commissioner, or just have him send it?
Just me. All right, didn't mean to. When you get as old as I am, and you're thinking about something, you just gotta shoot it on out there. Maybe there was something else I needed to say, so I didn't mean to stop you. If you got anything else, go right ahead.
Oh, no, 28 lot, I wait till it comes up, it's on my agenda.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody else have anything else that they want to share with the group, with the public? August, you know, I would say next month, I guess the County Fair and Road is going to be... What I used to look forward to as a child and still do, but, you know, I haven't been involved too much with... I guess there's a big deal up front, but I haven't seen, you know, it's like... No wonder, no wonder. Okay, so you want me to help you spend your money, or you?
For me?
Yeah, you can go, I don't know. Pepper or something, sure.
I don't know, I'll do it for you.
I appreciate you. You're doing it, yeah. All right, we always do. We don't have anything else under item five, we'll move along here to item number 10. Consideration, discussion, and possible vote to approve resolution authorizing county grant program for Cleveland Senior Citizens Program. If I don't have a vote of participation, this is gonna be a, it's motion second, second. I think, I can make a second, I guess, and I have rarely made a motion, but it's not usually done. This is done every year. Cleveland, instead, we send, we have, we get money, or we give money to the Senior Citizens Program. We've got Senator Shepherd, we've got Lon Cohl Springs, and a lot of the upper end of the county, they come to Cohl Springs, and so they, Cohl Springs is bought right in, Cohl Springs funding, funding for precinct three is sent to Cleveland because a lot of our constituents... Did you go early, Ross? Yeah, earlier, anyway.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
I have a motion by, running out of time to second. I have a motion by Commissioner Mars, second, by Commissioner Dumpy. Any questions, y'all, if they ever say aye. Any opposed, aye, and then you got us 3-0. I'm gonna read the resolution. Resolution authorizing county grant program year 2026, a resolution of the county of San Jacinto. Certifying that the county has made a grant to its Cleveland Senior Citizens organization that provides home-delivered meals to homebound persons in the county who are elderly and/or have a disability, and certifying that the county has approved the organization's accounting system or fiscal agent, whereas the organization seeks to apply for grants, funds from the Texas Department of Agriculture to supplement and extend existing services for homebound persons in the county who are elderly and have a disability pursuant to home-delivered meal grant program. And whereas program rules apply the county in which an organization is providing homebound meals, services to make a grant to the organization in order for the organization to be eligible to receive program grant funds, and whereas program rules further apply the county approved the organization's accounting system or fiscal agent in order for the organization to be eligible to receive the program grant funds. It was all by the county. Section 1, the county hereby certifies that it has made a grant to the organization in the amount of, how much did we, was it 12 or 13? There's a blank here, and my person did not fill the blank here. You went with me, you held the check, you don't remember where? We need to, you know what we give?
Twelve.
Twelve thousand?
Or five million?
Well, actually, when it... I think it was 13, I think we even had...
We went up 14?
Yes, it was 13, because we went up this year, yes. I know she was very happy with it. It was more than she expected.
That's what I remember, I appreciate that. To be paid and used between 2025 and the 30th of September 2026. We haven't actually approved that, but I'll go in. On the second act, we're in. Section 2, county certifies that the organization provides home-delivered meals to homebound persons in the county who are elderly and who have a, and/or have a disability. Section 3, county certifies that it has approved the organization's accounting system or fiscal agent which meets financial system requirements set forth in the Texas Grant Management Standard promulgated by the Texas Comptroller of Public. Caps introduced, read, and passed by affirmative vote of the county on this 20th day of August. Next, item number 11. Consideration, discussion, and to hear the presentation of the 2024 audit for Jensen County Emergency Services District.
Martin.
How are you?
Wonderful, how are y'all?
Good.
Good. So as you guys know, we present the audit to you every year. It does not require action, but it's for your review. You should have all got it in your email. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
I see it, you have the engine fund balance of three, over $3 million, that's a good thing.
Yeah, and right now...
And that surprises me a little bit because y'all are spending money all over, helping on these fire departments and so forth. And everybody, everywhere I go, I see top-notch equipment, and so...
We just ordered a brand-new engine, pumpers, yesterday.
I'm a bit in this week, have, our rate for this year is .50, and days go up. Y'all are capped 10. I'm having to go down two points, and we're still gonna have a little bit more than last year. I don't know how y'all do it, but keep up the good work.
Just a lesser of a percentage of the whole.
Yes. What does that mean, how much cost it now?
$484,000 plus 10 to outfit with, you know, tools and stuff like that. And then another $1,000 to wrap it.
And when you started, do you remember what one cost you?
We bought three engines in 2012 for $600,000. And we had to finance them because we didn't have $600,000. And we paid it out and paid those off, and the district is debt-free. We have no debt at all. So the fact that the district can buy one new apparatus every year is amazing. And last year, we were able to do two.
Good for y'all, good job.
Yep.
You implement a full-time firefight, and you may have choked up on that, all the purchases, but...
We got it, we got it. This is, it's all gonna move along great.
I'll take that to think that I'm opposed to a full-time service, because that's, I just think, I thought we were light years away from that, but if we can pull it off...
That's something.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Just positive things happen.
I haven't got to the back page, but I presume there's a, the letters come on in there, that there's no fine, they can tell y'all, y'all, and...
Right.
Is our future in Shepherd, is it a new, still a new fire station up on the canal?
So it's on the agenda every time because that is the next thing. And I keep it there to keep it fresh and keep it tabled. And the land has been purchased, and the agreement has been made to build a new station. Now, when we get there, not sure, but it's gonna stay fresh on the agenda.
Yeah. So who, which department are we getting the fire, the $400,000 fire truck?
So we're not sure exactly. This one we are purchasing because it is on the assembly line and can be picked up by the end of the year, and it's what will serve our needs because it's a four-hand cap or, you know, for the...
Did you just say y'all are spending $400,000 on a fire truck, and you don't even know who's gonna get it?
Well, we don't need to know because as long as it serves the service in the county, it doesn't matter. When we have one in the shop, that one can go to there. It can, it can be at the Coal Spring and stage here for when we need it for somewhere. It can be used for the duty crew. We don't, the days of assigning things to a department are gonna be few and far between because right now, we want to do what's best for the whole entire district.
So if you waited another, say, a month or something, or one, won't it turn around, be on that thing a year?
Sometimes it's two years. The only reason we're getting this one is because it was already on the line, and somebody else went with something else, or they made two when they only needed one. And so we can get this one by December.
Well, this is basically a spare, because I mean, there's not, it's not like somebody's burned up or blew the motor out of it.
No, sir, there's no such thing as a spare, but we do have O2 models, O3 models, O4 models throughout the county, and they go to the shop a lot. When they do, this one would go in its place. Or it would stay in Coal Spring for this duty crew to run out of.
That's... I was just thinking.
It is.
Or if it costs too much money to fix, it's junked.
That's right, that's right. It's a fleet, fresh trucks. The Forest Service is really good about helping us with, but tankers and engines, the ESD's kind of...
A little different.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you.
And thank y'all for everything.
Yes, ma'am.
Have a good day.
You too.
I'll make that motion, it'll be accepted.
I don't think it requires anything.
Yeah, I don't either. All right, I mean, she got to say anything, but...
It's all big.
We got questions, we'll ask them.
Item number 12. Consideration, discussion, possible vote to approve the winning contractor for the buyout demolition of three properties. Way back when we started, we went through a process and we qualified, was it six or seven? Different contractors to be on the approved list.
What's the big prostrance is in?
You know, I guess the grant writers dealt with all this directly, because I didn't, we didn't... The initial set of files, the first one was at least 16 or so, anyway. We kind of went through it, the whole court would either, all I got is this little thing here that summarizes it. I guess it's not too hard to...
Maybe others have a bid on it.
There's a huge difference in them. Anyway, there's a River Street property. We have a bid from JWTC and C4. JWTC, they average these prices because these properties may or may not have asbestos required. And so they give a price, JWTC's price with demo plus testing is $21,500. Demo plus testing plus abatement, $26,500. The average price is $24,000. So that's what, that's what the grant writers said to, I know we went round and round, but we did settle on that process. C4, demo plus testing, $8,200. Demo plus testing plus abatement, $11,200. And their average price was $9,700. The next property is on Richard Street. These are all down in Camilla Twin Harbors, and Camilla behind us there. Richard Street, JWTC, $11,380, testing, plus testing, $11,380. Then demolition plus testing plus abatement, $16,380. Average price, $13,880. So I think they go out and, I don't know if they actually test every single one, but I think they have ways to determine, you know, if you see a whole wall full of asbestos siding, you know you gotta test, and then you know you gotta abate. It could be that they test, and there is no asbestos, so I'm not real clear if they're paid, because I haven't seen these contracts yet. If they pay on the average price, I would think they would pay them the actual price that they bid on, depending on what, y'all get paid for abatement if you didn't do a bait. Anyway, $16,380, JWTC for including the baitment, and the average price, $13,880. C4, $8,200 without abatement, $11,200 for abatement, average price, $9,700. That's a little better as well on that one. Martina Street, and I sent forwarded, when they went out to go do the walkthrough, I forwarded that information to Commissioner Sweeney in case he wanted to go out. I've been through a bunch of these, and I was kind of in the way, so I didn't... Martina Street, JWTC, without testing, no, without abatement, $27,020. With abatement, $32,020. Average price, $29,520. C4, without abatement, $11,500. With abatement, $21,000. Average price, $16,250. You just add them together and divide it by two. SciTech bid on this one, $24,400 without abatement, $44,800 with abatement. Average price, $34,600. So the average price without testing, with testing on each property was C4 contractors. So... Yeah.
I make a motion to award the contract to C4?
What I do is I'd make a motion for C4, $9,700 if there's abatement, it's $11,200. That's on River Street. And then Richard Street will do C4, $9,700, and if there's abatement, it's $11,200. And then on Martina Street, $16,250 if there's a bait.
See, that's, that's just the average, but I would say, I would say demo plus, if there's not an abatement, it's $8,200. And then if there is an abatement, I guess they're gonna test everything, and I wouldn't want to pay them $9,700 if they don't.
That's just, okay, I'll change the motion. We'll make it at $8,200 on River Street. That's just, okay, we'll, I'll change the motion. We'll make it at 8,200 on River Street. And if there's abatement, it's.
Or you can say approve it as per the spreadsheet.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, we'll just prove it the spreadsheet.
Alright.
C4, I get River Street. C4, I get Richard Street. C4, I get Martina Street.
Yes, sir.
And I second that.
I have a motion, Dr. Commissioner Martin, second, Dr. Commissioner Dominique.
They are all the lowest bidders, by far.
Yes, sir. Award bids to C4. I'm not looking at any of the, C4.
I got them.
I do know for what it's worth, we had about nine or 10 original outlets when we first qualified bidders, and, uh, it was one from Idaho, and one from California, maybe, and we accepted Texas bids as bidders.
And we even tried to get a bunch of locals to bid on it.
You have, you have, you do have all this, I just didn't hear you.
No, she emailed me and asked me to open a scan with some tours so she could do them, and then she's in the spreadsheet.
Grant writers have already looked over these and evaluated, and they sent us the spreadsheet with the recommendation. C4 Land Management, 11 Forest Street, that's, uh, Mr. Cadenhead. Bradley Cadenhead, that Jared Cadenhead's boy.
Who they are, I don't know.
They're out of Coleman Springs, Texas. His grandma is Judge Sulu.
Okay.
He, he, that's a.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. Well, I was trying to remember who that was. He bid on all the other ones, and he, I think he was low on, on, without testing. But he didn't, he, he was, he put quite a bid high, higher bid on his, if it required abatement. And I don't think he wanted to fool with them if they required abatement, but I guess he learned a little something. So he ended up having a little bid, but he didn't get none of the jobs, because he didn't.
Till I was tested.
Yeah. But anyway, I have a question. Do we have anything we need to do there? I guess we have. Next to the highlight of the meeting, consideration discussion possible, vote to approve presentation of outside annual and single audits by Louis Freelove and Brooks Watson and Company for the year ending 9/30/2024. Did we vote on that one? No, we didn't. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes aye, that you know is three of them. Thank you.
I thought you already booked online. Well, good morning, y'all. Uh, Louis Freelove, senior audit examiner, Brooks Watson, and I've had the pleasure of conducting the annual audit for the county. So in front of you, here's a down copy of both the annual financial audit and a single audit report. And inside of the cover of that annual audit.
First question.
Yes, sir.
On the federal state single audit, is that already been, do you upload it to some site that all, some clearinghouse site or something like that?
After this meeting, we will, yeah. And that requires you to log in and submit bid report.
Only reason I ask, we're, as you know, being the outside auditor, we're involved in a lot of grant deals, and every single one of.
It's all part of it.
I wanna know about. Where's our?
Yeah.
Single audit, you know, you gotta have this. And there's even one that I think's got a red hole button there. Kidding, a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, you have a little 4 million in federal expenditures that were tested and scanned as part of the single audit, and that's just federal side, so. It's quite a bit of money, and so we've got that, yeah, we'll talk about that here.
Yes, sir.
But inside of the cover of the report, I've got a couple handouts there. Uh, this would be the primary one I'll be utilizing, which is to print out of my presentation. I'll be utilizing that to go over the results of the audit. So if you wanna follow along with me, feel free to. Uh, I'm gonna start with that in first, that's the second page I did. Just give a quick overview of the audit process, uh, this, this one here, so. So first, we do, uh, conduct the audit reports and generally accept the audit committees. Uh, and as that is broken down in various phases, first being the assessment phase, so we're looking at anywhere where money's coming in and going out, and to see what kind of controls the county has, which those departments has, uh, making sure that we don't see any areas that are particularly concerned or, uh, it's gonna be risky in every department, or we'll see what kind of controls are placed to mitigate these.
Maybe I shouldn't ask, but what's your thought on the, uh, I think everybody, every department we got, except me, has a credit card. When they, when they have the credit card, it seemed like you're losing a little control there. We hardly ever, I'm talking, but I've been here since 98, but hardly anybody had a credit card. If you wanted the credit card, you had to go to the auditor and get down on one knee and draw it, and I mean.
Yeah.
It makes things more convenient in this new modern age we're living in, but, uh, well, they can go out and charge whatever.
It's a lot easier for us ordering parts and.
A lot of it is, but the control is, you loosen your grip when everybody got a credit card.
Yeah, particularly the controls you have in place are, are limitations on how much we can spend. Um, and so that usually helps quite a bit. Also, there's knowing who had each card, it's not just like me. I mean, I've seen where there's no name assigned to a card, and that's, you know, dangerous territory.
Reminds me of the time when there was a female deputy who was in the sheriff's office many moons ago, was giving a car. She had another bid up seeing the, the invoice or something. Alright, guys, what, what, what we find, kind of black jackets or uniforms, are we getting in Victoria's Secret? She went out and bought a bunch of.
She didn't know they had that.
So anyway, what are you gonna do? Return them? I mean, kinda, I think that, I don't know how they got, they made it right, but it was just a colorful example of what.
We added ours, and our audit group got ours on, and so they'll stick it on the slide. No, a big part of the secret.
I speak true story, I'm just passing it over. I speak real bridge, too, over. Anytime my credit cards used, I authorized it. Only time that I don't use mine is when they might call and say, hey, we got too much, we don't have our credit card. They'll call and say, our credit card's maxed out, and we need this and that, and we need to use your card, and that's what I do. And that's what, as far as, I don't know if anybody else knows, real bridge, where any things used on a credit card, real bridge, I know about it. It's approved on it.
Nobody uses it.
I guess the whole reason to bring that up, so everybody having a credit card, that's not a big issue with y'all.
It's all about how they're handled, and how they're used, and what policies and procedures the county has in place.
Policies and procedures that we have in place, I presume are excellent, or you'd be, they'd handle it.
Yeah, we, I have listed as a concern, I very appreciate.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Thank you, yeah. No, it's a good question. But we, we do, so we look at it, so there's areas, areas that we consider, uh, yeah, to have more risks especially, and then we have questionnaires completed over each of those areas as well, to make sure that, you know, if there's a lot of questions that may not always get addressed in a policy or procedure that we're looking at, so we wanna make sure we have a good understanding of those.
Ever have anybody actually checked the box that says, yeah, old Joe Willie, he's been stealing for years, or he puts fire on the gas in his truck every day when he leaves the yard?
Had a couple.
I guess that does, it does happen, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, you gotta ask, uh, and, and some people, they wanna tell, and it's not until someone asks that they're, you gotta say something. You know, so this, uh, we wanna make sure we're requiring our compliance as well.
For sure.
Um, then we do compliance testing, so, uh, we look to see, make sure that bid requirements that are required, uh, for items over, uh, 50,000, are moving up to 100,000 soon, uh, and then.
Right now?
Sure, damn, okay.
Bid requirements, the government said, uh, under the, the local government code, if you purchase, uh, services or something over 50,000, historically, it's been that for years.
Has that, has that been raised to 75, or?
That's right. It's going to 100 effective, uh, 9/1, I believe.
I knew there was a increase in the works, but that's, that's going to 100.
Yeah, it's been, uh, it's been at 50 for, it went from 25 to 50, I don't know, maybe 15, 20 years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, so it's, it was due to happen against him, so they doubled it from 50 to 100. And it's, it, uh, you know, and some.
Glad to hear that. That's too much, if you ask.
And, you know, there, there are ways, uh, so.
There's restrictions on federal, federal funds.
Right, there are. And you can also set internal.
Oh, so if we're, if, just 'cause the state law went up and the feds hanging at 50, then we still gotta.
So why, we still have to do the same thing on the market?
Yeah, and, and internally, you could also set a policy, like, things that, things like this and that, we still want bid gone over a certain threshold, like, so there's, there's.
We got a policy, if you, the day after the election, it's called the lame duck policy. You're not supposed to spend over $500 after that. Uh, I mean, you gotta, it's a little bit, I mean, yeah. Hey, I, I like to spend $500, $2, and you gotta take it before getting approved, that's. You aware of the policy that we did?
The, the lame duck policy?
Yes, sir.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't look at that one.
Yeah. Well, we did, I'm just.
You can't even, you know, speaking of that, even if somebody's in office and they, they're going out of office into the lame duck though. You can't even buy you. $500 without getting court approval.
Yeah. I'm not sure how much, uh, you would even know, for something like that, I mean, to buy gas.
Those are policy.
Yeah, I know. That's alright. You can put there for a good reason, but.
Ah, yeah. Yes, sir, I agree.
Well, now, under that compliance testing, we're also looking at, uh, you know, obviously, an additional bid departments are looking at, and you grant the parties, so that, uh, gets triggered, this, prior to this year that we're in now, it's been at 750,000 of federal funds and state funds. So it would trigger a single audit on either side. Uh, on the federal side, that has since, as of this next year, or for 2025, gone to a million. You all, or will certainly exceed that.
Is that just for the federal money, or?
That's just for federal, yeah. So then, if, on the state side, uh, I haven't seen anything that says that they followed suit on that, so it's still at 750, as far as I've seen.
So one of the ones, the main one that, that send me emails wanting a copy of our federal audit is, uh, Department of Health and Human Services, because we lease some rooms for about 15,000. That's way, and yet, they won't see that. And they, boy, they worry you out, and to produce it.
Yeah. They wanna make sure that you're handling your, your funds well.
I guess so, I guess so.
Uh, so, uh, so what, so we've got the single audit, uh, and then, uh, Public Fund Investment Act, so there's, those are the compliance areas we look at, and then we do that filter and phase, where we actually tie up the numbers, so we form cut-off procedures, make sure that you, you know, what can actually happens after you're in to see, hey, should that have been included in the year that we're auditing as a cruel item? Or also tying out that balance sheet, uh, with third-party confirmation where possible, so any debt activity, bank activity, things that, that makes sure we're confirming with the banks, make sure that it's consistent with record. Um, and then we're also, as we're tying up the balance sheet, and make sure that those are properly, uh, approved for, and tie it out, the testing revenues and the expenditures, to make sure those are materially accurate as well. Uh, and so, you know, a large chunk of that, uh, outside of your tax dollars, into that nature, is that federal, those federal dollars, which are tested in even more detail on the single audit side. And then we move into conclusion reporting phase, that's gonna go through multiple, multiple layers of review, to ensure that no additional proceedings are necessary as part of the audit, and that all reporting requirements are, are accomplished within the report that we prepared. Uh, next, that third page, it just goes over what's in that report document, so, uh, from front to back, there's the auditor's opinion letter, there's a management's discussion and analysis, so that gives you some year-to-year comparison. It also goes over some of the high-dollar material areas in the financials, such as capital activity, debt, uh, covers some budget information, into that nature. Uh, then behind that's your basic financial statements, so that's gonna give you both your full, cool, government-wide statements in the front, and then your fund level statements behind that, which is gonna be what you are used to looking at when you're looking at numbers for the county. And then behind that's your notes to the financials, so that's gonna give you, uh, a lot of detail and language about what those numbers in the financials are about. And oftentimes, they'll have a breakdown type of chart that shows what those numbers consist of, or, uh, language about, uh, what those, how those, those account numbers are treated on account. Behind that's your required supplementary information, such as your budget to actual for your general fund, and then behind that's other supplement, and supplementary information, such as financial-related information, other consolidations, things. So next page, that fourth page there, as it relates to that auditor's opinion letter, that's that first item in the report. Uh, there are four possible opinion types that we as auditors are able to issue. This, uh, was known as unmodified, qualified, exclaimed, or reversed opinion. The county did receive an unmodified opinion. It's often referred to as a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that we as auditors are able to issue and provide, uh, so that's what we wanna see. So have the report the county did receive a clean report. Next page five, this is financial highlights, uh, so this is just comparing the plan balances for the year, year-over-year, for prior year, per year.
I've been involved with this for about 20 years, and I ain't never seen it go up, the general fund. It says it went up 1.3 in one year. I, I, I've never heard of such. I'm thinking, what more could have happened, or? I guess if you assist our financial situation on any given week, you're not gonna have the same number, and when things come out, things.
Yeah, and so a big part of it is timing, uh, when things actually occur, so if, and the next slide after this one, we'll look at the budget to actual, and you'll see that y'all were well under-budded, meaning some things that were planned out to be utilized during the year likely didn't happen in time to be able to capture for that year, so revenues.
Same week, we're gonna spend $500,000 on this or that, or whatever.
Yeah.
And it didn't happen, so it looks like you, boy, you really hit a good lick there, but the next year, it's probably just the opposite, so.
That's right, yeah.
This isn't.
Yeah, it's not many, you know, it, so when looking at.
We had 1.4 every year left over, or excess. I'd expect my company to come in here with a big old long rail, and tie me up on it like, uh, like they did no brother where I'm, I mean, yeah, that's not.
No, so it's, it's not, it does, it's misleading in that it looks like, oh, like the general fund's making money, and that's not what's happening. It's, it's just the timing of revenues and expenses, and right now.
Really, I need to start pitching, I thought I did a pretty good job pitching, I didn't tighten up apparently, but, anyway, go ahead and finish.
Yes, this is over, oh, yeah, it, we expect these funds to go up and down every year, this is oftentimes due to timing, something, but, um, you know, if you, this is very rare for you to be able to align your budget, like, when you adopt that budget, to then at the end of the year go, wow, we, we hit it, I don't know the money. Uh, like, that never happens, and so.
There's some smaller, I, I know we put a couple hundred thousand for the last several years into a fund to bill out the, sorry, the building over by Mason, by the, by the, by the, by the head start. And we had, we just keep rolling over and out. That's one smaller example of retirement thing. We hadn't, we hadn't spent anything out of it. We've been funding a, a medical retirement system that, uh, eventually will have people start taking advantage and then put it in. Yeah, alright.
Yeah, so these are the, the other items here, what they are, each of the road and bridge funds, one through four, um, all are up and down, uh, kind of depending on timing, so, one was up 200,000, then that two was down, I'm just 9,000, three was down.
The right-hand column, you have brackets over, that means it, it went down, and then it went up.
Yeah, so that far left column is showing you the prior year ending fund balance for the fund. Then that middle column there is the ending fund balance for the current year, uh, that I'm reporting on, and then that final column is showing you the difference between, so the increase and decrease of those funds. And so that's just indicating whether or not, it's often, you might choose to utilize part of your fund balance.
Do you utilize a laptop much in these presentations you go to? We got a big handy-dandy screen, and it might be something to think about.
Yeah, next time, yeah.
Very young screen, yeah, I know you know how to do it with a power point, but. Very young screen, yeah, I know you know how to do it with a powerpoint, but, uh, that would be beneficial to.
I've never seen a screen download in here, so I'll have to do that next time.
And turn the button over, I'm gonna go, somebody show me which button to push, and we can make it happen.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, yeah, it's, uh, I'll, I'll make, or next time, do that, make sure it's plenty printed out for everybody. Um, but yeah, and so, yeah, those, and then, uh, Road and Bridge Four was relatively break-even, down.
Because you, you compagiate at the E S D, and he, he did such a thing, I was, I'm pretty sure he.
Yeah, no, we do, yeah, we do that.
They had, had a little powerpoint. I'm thinking about y'all, I'm looking at.
Yeah, I'll make sure to do that next time, and.
Yes, sir.
Make sure you communicate ahead of time. Um, and then, all other funds, that's gonna be everything else, like, you got a lot of grant funds, a lot of special revenue funds that are restricted for various purposes. So that's a consolidation of those other funds, showing you overall decreases of two point eight, that's primarily using, that's a lot of grant activity primarily.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, we're, we're gonna have some areas where we save a little money here and there, but it's not like we've just got a two million dollar, uh, excess of money, some things just had to be utilized, or some things just ran out.
Were you saying, let me do a lot of the grant funding?
Well, yeah, that happens too.
Yeah, now, that, that does happen, and especially in Road and Bridge, that's, because they gotta have match money and they're saving it. But we didn't quite get to utilize it this year, so we'll roll it back in the news.
Wow, I don't have that problem.
No, you, you put it right on, you use pretty good.
Uh, so next, page six there, that's give you a quick, uh, summarized view of the budget to actual, that kind of alluded to it on that last, uh, page there, but when you look at that far-right column, that's showing you the, the difference between your actual numbers, which is the center there, and the budgeted amount on the left. So revenues, we're pretty on target, so out of the fourteen point four budgeted, you actually received two hundred forty thousand more than budgeted on the revenues, uh, so.
You just talk about general funds, so that, that bottom line we got, there's just one point five eight four, and, uh, on the previous slide, one point three nine eight, that's what.
Yeah, because at one point, this is comparing to the budget, so the last page is comparing fund balance to fund balance, that's your change in fund balance year-over-year.
Right.
This is just showing you, uh, as it relates to your budgeted amount, how did you, how did you fare? And so revenues, you came in a little over expectations there, but expenditures, out of, you budgeted for fourteen point four, uh, actual expenditures for the fund were thirteen point one, and so you got a positive variance there of one point two.
Now, now, the, uh, that's more of what I would like to.
Do you want one too?
Yeah, there again, there's some things that didn't get, we were gonna do this or that, and it didn't go through.
Yeah, it's often.
But it is good to, uh, not spend as much as you. If you got a budget, and this is what we need to make it through here, and if you can save some money and not spend as much as you thought you were going to, that's a good thing.
I mean, you know, these, all of those things that ended up coming in under budget, you know, looking in, then, like, obviously, you're far into the twenty-five year, uh, nearly close to the end, and you can look back and say, oh, yeah, well, that stuff we planned on was twenty-eight, twenty-four, it all happened in October, November, December.
Right.
And so then it got used up already, so it's not like you have an extra million dollars floating around.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's right.
So we do make sure that if something occurred during this year, they got paid out after you're in, we make sure that gets approved back, and we make sure those expenses are in right a year. Um, but if something just delayed for whatever reason, it doesn't actually happen until the next year, we can't accrue that back, it's not about when you plan.
We put the roof on the jail in the previous year, that was like a half million dollars, it was an unbesotted expense, but we we may have utilized some rent, we used some rent money to do that. That is, that is this year, what's?
No, it's, this is the past year.
It's not this audit.
No, it's not this.
That's not reflected in.
Correct, that would not be in here.
Got you, got you.
Um, so, yeah, and then expenses, yeah, and then the other sources and uses are gonna be transferred in, transferred out primarily, um, between general fund and other funds, and so, um, expected to have, uh, transferred out in two forty, only transferred out to eighty-eight thousand, so positive variance there, of course, fifty-two thousand, uh, which that's usually, um, always gonna be up or down a little bit, depending on the actual needs, and then, so net total positive variance of one point five. So obviously, there are some expenditures that, uh, had, had not earned yet, so that triples down into that, uh, that unrestricted budgetary fund balance figure here at the bottom, I kept some of that historical data in there, we wanna make sure that, you know, we're looking at how much is sitting in the unsigned portion of your fund balance for the general fund, and we wanna make sure that there's at a minimum.
Well, I remember they used to tell us, you need to have at least three or four months' worth, you, you're actually going to grant two months.
So two months is like that minimal recommendation? Yeah, um, and we.
I would see bragging on myself, if all I had was two, two months' worth of fund balance.
Yeah, hey, some, some struggle to get there, so, you know, but you have others that are farcistic, and they're up nearly a hundred plus, uh, you know, so we recommend point five thirty as a good target, some, some folks choose to have a policy that you wanna have, uh, have at least point five fifty percent unassigned fund balance, like, some, somewhere.
You know, a lot of, most of our revenue is tied to property tax, right? This is, uh, I think it's the twentieth budget out there, and, and only one time, I believe, in twenty years have we had, have we not, you know, you're going over the four digits, cut, cut the budget, now, the year that we got sanctioned, we didn't get sanctioned, we got summoned by the jail commission, y'all gonna build a new jail. We had to do C O's, and we had to raise the tax rate fund back. Every other year, and it's only because every year, and property values have gone up, well, property values have gone up so much this year. Now, they have, the legislature set forth, uh, formulas that you have to use to calculate your rates, and we're dropping from point five oh, not four digits. They have to five oh to four eight this year, because values went up. Uh, they can't continue forever to keep going up, I shudder to think what's gonna happen. You could get a, in three years or so, you know, you could get a huge change in, in the president, and, and that, that had big, a lot of things caused traumatic effects on the economy, but values ever start going down, that, that, that could be a nightmare. Because I don't know, those same laws that say you can't, you can only raise your rates so much, if they plummeted, we'd be.
Yeah.
Big trouble, I was going somewhere, but, uh, you, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, yeah. But, yeah, so for, for twenty-four, y'all had, uh, sixty-nine percent, uh, considering the unassigned unrestricted fund balance from the general fund, so, uh, like, really, that's higher this year because of it being, so.
It's up to a hundred percent, I, I could just say, nah, let's just don't even send the bill.
Right.
They're right.
Yeah, well, you know, and so, it's, that's why I want to make sure I let that, uh, sort of that in there, because typically, it's, it's in that forty, like, the past couple years, in that forty-five, fifty percent range, so it's higher this year, uh, but that's a snapshot of time, when you're comparing expenses from twenty-four to your fund balance, and so that ratio, it, I imagine, will go back down next year, so.
Oh, thanks, man.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's gonna blow off, you know, we, we had insurance on the group, but they, they only wanted to pay taxes. But we decided, I think we did the right thing, and fixed it right, and be, you know, because every day we were shut down, it was costing us, I don't even know what that was.
Whatever.
Thousands, about seventy-five dollars a day times sixty, that's how much, no, more than that. We were losing revenue, plus we were having to pay out for our own, seventy-five dollars times about a hundred, and we had that day, it was cost for that thing, we shut down by the general.
Um, well, uh, that brings me to page seven there, communication letters, so there's two letters that come with the report. Uh, the first letter is that, that's F one fourteen, which is a communication with the charge of government. Uh, that's got a lot of required communication in there related to audit, uh, responsibilities for us, over the audit management responsibilities. Uh, and there's three items all the way up to the point after that letter, uh, one, the audit was conducted in compliance with all ethics requirements, uh, regarding the meetings. Two, no difficulties were encountered when working with management, and then three, audit letters that were identified correctly by management. Yeah, the second letter is communication regarding the control, so this would be if we found any areas of concern, or if we would make our conditions. Um, only item with noted was I T concerns, and, uh, there's some audits, and things, uh, that resulted in a slight delay, uh, uh, in the audit, but, uh, I know thankfully, we're covered by, by many, and, uh, where it allows us to be able to move forward, but, uh, that was one area of recognition is considering, uh, what we're I T, uh, backup and controls and all those kinds of things, uh, to make sure that data not lost, and then, uh, and then there's two other items listed in that, are just more F Y I items, uh, related to new, uh, changes that are happening, so G A B one oh one. It's effective for this four, twenty-four, twenty-five year, which is a change in the way, uh, reporting can be done over compensated absences. So you might see some variation in, in, uh, dollar values related to those, uh, on the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Uh, this kind of depends on a few different items on how much of an impact they have on the county, but, um, just want to make sure that you're aware, I could see some fluctuations, but doesn't change, you know, cash flow and how much gets paid out, it just changes how it's reported. Another item, which I actually mentioned earlier, which is that, uh, that single audit threshold has gone, uh, from seven fifty to a million for federal, uh, audits and, uh, federal funding, so, um, that, that change, uh, won't really affect you all, uh, most likely, as you guys seem to have no problem dealing with it, is that, uh, that threshold on federal expenses, just like, uh, different grants that you have going on, so, uh, but, in the, in that instance, you all have a, a light year on grant activity, uh, that's not an issue.
Well, I, the next one, because this long star grants a million dollar point two, and I think we've already been approved for the next year, which starts September first, so I'll throw us into that, to that next year. Compensated absences, we got issue there, or?
That's not, no, that, those are other items, just to make sure that you're aware of them, uh, that's a new G A B announcement, G A B one oh one, and it's just changing the treatment, used to, uh, you didn't have to account for sick time, it's as a liability, um, most likely, most, most primarily because of the way it's tracked and used, and whether or not it's paid out if someone leaves. Uh, however, they're now requiring that to be accounted for as liability.
We pay it out if they leave, or do they lose that?
We don't pay out sick time, but, but what he's saying is, is what we have on the books, they have to calculate and put that in our financials now.
If we don't pay it out when they leave, the only way that could buy us is if they. So.
It's really.
I guess they could, and then they probably should, if they had sick time, if they were actually sick, and they're gonna have to not leave, let them. You wouldn't pay it out, you'd just keep them on the books until, until they knew they were putting them in.
Yeah, you, so they utilize their sick time and get paid out, but you, uh, you, depending on, you know, some of, that's a bit, some of that for a long period of time, and you have.
We saw that happening in the department, the person had cancer, and was out for a long time, and she died. That, that person, she was dead, she gets sad.
Yeah, and when that happens, oftentimes, you end up, you're paying that person, but then you end up having to hire someone else too to do the job that they would.
I'm not sure if he just made the rest of it tighten up, and get a carrier, which.
Sure, that happens too. Yeah, but in any case, uh, G A B is wanting to make sure that people are showing.
Didn't hire nobody else, because it, you, they, they only got so many positions.
Yeah. Yeah, or someone, or you might have to hire a contractor to assist, to, to help fill that role, depending on what position is, obviously, department, but, so, uh, so there may be added costs when that happens, but, um, in either case, even if it's, even if it's, you're still paying out some time, and it's right in line with what she would have paid out, had they been working like normal, um, G A B wants to make sure that you're.
We don't pay it out, though, if they were, they quit, or get fired, they got a bunch of.
Right, which is why we don't, which is why you won't see a liability for just all sick time that's there, there's a, there's an equation that goes into it, like, the likelihood of use is a big part of that, and so if, if we determine that there's a low likelihood of use, then you don't have to, uh, approve for that liability as well, so. So there's some evaluation that we have to do over the data for the county, to determine what that likelihood of, of that use is, uh, and then apply it to their hourly rate, that is what drives that liability number.
So it's gonna be a new section in the audit next year for that.
It'll, it'll be like, uh, it'll, it'll be added to the compensated absences that's there now, it'll just have a new component in it. And then it'll be in the first, this next year, when, once it's, uh, there'll be a note disclosure about that specifically.
So it doesn't have anything to do with the audit, or something I supposed to ask you about a new requirement for us to have y'all doing? Some type of a study, yeah, yeah, what was that?
Uh, you're talking about for, for the, uh, retirement, he's recommended a firm already for that, they don't do that, they recommend.
Yeah, so, uh, you refer to that employee retirement, uh, deal, so, yeah, so that, um, when you have a, uh, something like that set up, it requires.
We, we, we've kicked this around for a couple of years, and two, for two years, we've been putting a hundred thousand in our fund, but we not, hadn't been, there's been much debate, because there's a lot of concern, we, somebody broke our crystal ball, we had no idea who all's gonna retire, and whether or not we can afford it. But this study that you're talking about, it kinda seems like we should have done that before we even started funding it.
Well, there's, so there's two pieces, I mean, there is that part of it.
It basically gives you an educated guess on what it costs to fund it.
Correct, yeah.
We just went in there.
You just.
I ain't gonna say it wasn't nothing, no study, I'm not half-blind, I mean, you can, you can, we know what insurance costs, and what we, we did settle on four hundred dollars per retiree, whether they're over sixty-five or not, but but you still don't have any way, you know, you might look at historical data of other counties that have a similar system, and it all would have, I guess these people will look at the ages of our employees, I mean, ours are predominantly sixty-plus, which they're not, but that would be.
That would drive like a higher, like, yeah, and so, until, so there's, so what they'll do is that they'll do all the actuarial data, where they evaluate historical trends, ages, all those kinds of things, and like, how, how long would they, it should be in retirement, so what would that, I can't quite do.
It's not, y'all, y'all are gonna recommend somebody, I thought y'all were gonna end up performing such a.
Oh, no, yeah, that's not something that we do, um, yeah, so it's an, so it would be an actuary, so there's a couple of them out there that we see work with a lot of municipalities. Uh, and so it's, so they will, until there's a, until there's someone who is in the plan, getting paid out from it, there, there won't be a, a liability tied to it.
A liability is four hundred a month for a person that's in there, we know what the liability.
Well, that's what will get paid out, but once you determine, let's say you got some folks that are actually enrolled in it and getting paid out, and you're able to determine, okay, well, what, how, what are we gonna need to fund this thing, how long will it last, what will the liability for this be based on that, some, that, those assessments that are done by the actuary? Uh, I'm not an actuary, I, I just kinda, I know enough to say something that might get you in trouble.
Be here ten years, so they'd have to be at least forty before they'd be eligible, I would think, that's one criteria. Okay, it's the same, if you're forty and you're retiring, you don't actually let four hundred goes towards your insurance, but, but you don't rush your bank works. Not sure that works. I know if you're over sixty-five and you retire, you go to Medicare and the four hundred is on the amount we determined that should take care of itself.
Yeah, no, I think it's great, yeah, but it does require, so like, next year, there'll be some note disclosure requirements of, hey, the county has approved this thing, this thing exists. But then, and until, so until, until someone's getting paid out or is enrolled in it, there won't be a liability number on it. But there will be, on the actuarial side, they'll be able to assist in determining, okay, well, what, what we, what will it take to fund this thing, what will that look like? And sort of help the county also plan on that side of it. And it'll, and it'll put some notes...
Retired here at forty, and took another job, but I don't know if we, I don't know if it kicks in because you probably would have interest in that job. But if you get to where you, who wouldn't want to retire at forty, but anyway. I was thinking y'all were gonna kind of be doing, that's why I was pushing out.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, that's, that's something that we do, but yeah, it's some, but we would, knowing that it exists, it'd be something we'd be asking about next year. Hey, do you have, do you have somebody lined up to look at this and prepare those actuarial studies or something?
Y'all discovered the need or recommended that we do such a study, I think, that this is what...
Yeah, we, we saw that that was coming through and recommended that, that start. Maybe if you guys make up groups, somebody could do that. So there's a, there's a couple of TRS and CAPRIS or two that I see quite a bit, and I'm sure there's others.
I didn't know there was such a, doesn't surprise me, but I, I never had any deal with it. I wouldn't know who to call to do such a study.
He's gonna hook us up, right?
Yeah, I wish I knew, you know?
Well, I wish, we probably should have done that before we even started. If I'd have known to do that, I would have suggested that. But anyway, it's, it's a good thing for the retirees.
Yeah, that's, yeah, absolutely, I think it's great, but it sounds like it's in motion, so...
Probably there's no harm in starting to set up a fund, but I mean, even if we have the study to determine that the man they all just came forth to do this, uh, we, we be obligated to put it back in the file and maintain it for percent two or something.
Are you saying three?
All right, I'm not really trying to get y'all to...
No, I, yeah, that, that really probably is just asking if there's any questions related to... The only other thing I did really hit on specifically is that single audit, that, that little, little down one here, is a single audit. Just had a little required communication on that, you'll see...
Which one of these is the one that says what a great job we did with our budget? No, that's the, the one that has your recommendation for...
So the right one?
And so on.
That one is, that you were looking at, the, as part of like recommendations, but that is on that...
Yeah, I see.
That's smaller.
Continue to monitor federal grants from two billion, that's good, but that's all...
Yeah.
That's, that's a good thing.
Yeah, so this, yeah, so there's three items, and two of which are just FYIs, make sure y'all are aware of those you need. The other one has...
And that's, we have time too where we can show that we need to implement this policy and that policy, and I don't see much of that here.
Yeah, not this year. Put some more, you know, that's going next year, see what I can find, make some more recommendations this year. And then, but I see a lot of report there, there's, you know, there's a spot where you note any findings, there are none to note thankfully. And then that page ten shows that you have a breakdown of all the federal expenditures for 2024. So you had just over four million federal expenditures, and that's just the setup with some grants, not, not y'all's match portion, which was more than that, so... So, but yeah, so a clean report on single audit as well.
So it says something in here, well, um... I just saw these letters this morning, I guess that's why. I think he got on his game today, uh, let's see. Representations, we've requested certain written representations from management which are included in the attached letter, they... It's later than that because I don't see anything with any attached, I don't know who exactly management is.
Uh, the management rep letter, uh...
Seen it me or her?
Yeah, and then, yeah, so this...
I didn't see a letter from either one.
Yeah, it's, uh, I'll make sure, yeah, you should have it, I'll make sure you, she have that. But it's all that is saying, yeah, we get your opinion, you did. But then this is, and then other letter is referencing that, those communication line and control recommendations, so...
Must be told about the other letter, there's only two letters, David, I'll explain that. I don't see that, that's all I'm saying, I didn't know.
Yeah.
That letter's where the issues come from.
No, 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 uh, that, that's just, what, what I was just, that's saying, hey, we, we the guys that are the only ones who got it. But then, the only issue that she get here, I think, is that she had...
Lastly, we're, we're in pretty decent shape.
Yeah, yeah, thankfully, yeah, I never like to give bad news, but I will pass to...
That's true. With me, oh, y'all got any questions?
On this page right here, on this, I'm at last paragraph, I didn't quite understand that. So it, it talks about whether or not there's a controlled deficiencies identified. And it's indicated there were none, no material weaknesses identified, but because we don't test every single transaction, that doesn't mean there isn't one out there. So when we apply it on the, when we give the opinion of the financials, it's, it's, hey, we can't find any material issues. We don't, we haven't found any material concerns or weaknesses that communicate. But it, it doesn't mean, if you look at every single transaction, you might find an issue here or there that we more, you couldn't have found it if you don't test every single transaction that happened within the year. So that's what that's trying to communicate. Maybe if you were to look, well, some of the, some of the stuff is that, that legalese or that, you know, that is standard language, boilerplate language.
I just don't recognize the media, public documents. The thing we did is we used the public document.
Right, yeah.
I just didn't understand why that was in there.
Only things wouldn't be if it was kind of something with a lawsuit.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
That's all, that's all the question that I have.
Uh, sensitive disclosure, like the county's disclosure, Capitol West, that's all.
Yeah, those are standard, that's, anything that has to do with estimates, so like, appreciation on assets is really estimate.
He did have, you know, he's retired, he's...
That would also have to do with that, in relation to pension, okay?
There's a spilling of bus falls, I thought y'all, y'all said here, huh?
I have to say, is it thirty?
Is it thirty, yeah. Okay, so what does this mean, issues or audit are significantly delayed due to departure of the previous audit...
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, uh...
Assuming you're talking about the auditor before, y'all, y'all been doing this three years, so...
Yeah, so...
Probably something that didn't get edited out.
That's, yeah, that's no fault of my part, but I just thought about that, I'll revise and present.
Or did you, did you just throw yourself under the foot?
Perhaps.
Okay, that, that's standard language, we might not admit for that, say it. So are we significantly late, one of these, one of the, what do they do?
Typically, you wanna try to deal with the...
Is it thirty or something?
Seventy-nine.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, we were primarily on target for that, we were seeing a lot of far, took quite a bit more time. But ultimately, we were able to get everything for it, but majority of the audit...
Focused on this, we encountered no significant difficulty. That's, that's the challenge with it.
Yeah, that, yeah, thankfully, the majority of audits was very smooth, you know, everything we needed, we were able to tire everything out, got what we needed. But just that, the single audit piece there, you guys had a lot, a lot going on for Nancy, so that took, took a little time to get everything needed for that. But once we got it, we were able to wrap it up. So, you know, really, I think we should, you know, knock on the way with this next year, even smoother.
I don't remember, do we... So all it is, what it is, I got it, I got it in here where we could go on accepting it or something like that.
Yeah, typically, people say we need to accept, but...
Do you have anything else in your presentation?
That, that would just open up for any questions, that'd be it, yeah.
Well, we weren't supposed to be asking them already? I'm not gonna thank the connections.
Yeah, you know, you got some folks who never say anything and then I'm like, well, hopefully, they didn't have...
After twenty years, I can't just sit up and keep them out, yes. I'm glad we got a good report. Does anybody else have any questions?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mars, second fact, yes, sir, Commissioner Donnie made a second. Any other questions, all of the things they have? Any opposed, eyes, evidence, numbers, three, four, six, seven? Now, there's some things in our, when we, when we pass our budget, I think that requires like four, uh, I believe, or a separate or something. But this does not require just a, just a majority, so... I can just see it now, next year's already will say, well, they messed up on approving the last year's audit, is that... Well, thank you very much.
I appreciate it, yeah, it's always a pleasure to get to work with County, everybody's a pleasure to work with, so, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I don't know if we can, consideration discussion possible, will you approve the final resolution? For Sandy County Hazard Mitigation Plan. We approved the plan some time ago and it was sent off to FEMA or Austin or the combination of the things to determine to get their blessing on, so to speak. We have received that blessing, I believe.
Yep.
Good job.
And is that the second, what they wanted in the verbiage, and I just...
Last time I talked to you, you were responding in a dual capacity, it took, I guess you called it a suicide attempt?
Yeah.
Did the person survive?
Let her survive, it's fake it, survive.
Wow, that's good. That was just a list participating of government, our Hazard Mitigation Plan is, it includes the county, Point Lanes, Shepherd, and Co. So... Assuming this resolution will get passed and we, we will download and send it to...
If you want to, I believe, we probably need some grant work, this time, that's needed back.
Well, I think it's a big one, so, any questions about this, or if it's not a legitimate motion to pass the resolution approving the mitigation plan?
I'll make the motion, that's the resolution for the Sandy County Hazard...
I have a motion by Commissioner Donnie, second fact, Commissioner Mars. Uh, any question, though, I favor say aye. Any opposed, eyes, evidence, numbers, three, zero? Suppose I'll read it, motion, Donnie, when we pass the portages of the resolution, you agree with the public decision? There was a public reading, we're asking. Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand amendment, the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, also known as the Stafford Act, creating a framework for state, local, tribal, and territorial government to engage in hazard mitigation planning to receive certain types of non-emergency assistance. I'm allowed to think that's a secondary, this is what we do to make sure all our citizens are safe. Whereas the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand was amended in May of 2023 to require an active hazard mitigation plan for federal grant funding eligibility. Whereas a core team comprised of members of Sandy County participating sub jurisdictions and school districts took part in the identification of critical facilities, community capabilities, identification and prioritization of natural hazard risks, and the identify, identification of new hazard mitigation actions. And whereas stakeholders and participants also provided input. And whereas the County of Sandy County and the Commissioners' Court commit to comply with the annual plan review as described by FEMA. And whereas the plan incorporates the comments, ideas, and concerns of the communities which this updated plan is designed to protect, as retained through a series of public outreach meetings, newspaper coverage, public publication of the draft plan for public review and comment and other activities. Now, therefore, be it resolved by Commissioners' Court of Sandy County, Texas, that the 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan update is hereby approved and adopted by Commissioners' Court of Sandy County and resolves to execute the actions in the plan. Who printed this out, there's no date on this, perhaps Ms. Wright will have a date stamp that'll give us, fulfill that. Just so y'all know, this is just an amendment to the plan, they passed a new rules and amended the Hazard Mitigation Act in May of 23. And we've had, we've had a plan for probably twenty years. Every so often, you have to review the plan and amend the plan. I know I've been involved in, this is the third plan I've been on the court that we've approved, at least, uh... Hey, let me pass it around and signature. So do you, you could put some sort of a stamp on it, right? We could date, date stamp it, that way we got a date in it. That's all right, if you don't mind. I'll get you a blue pen, you ever use a blue pen?
I always do, I do now.
Don't feel bad.
Light chip for this thing.
On a day two at law school, I'd have a... On a day two at law school, I'd have it in my head, always using blue.
It's just what's in.
I heard I said gray dog.
Well, I was pretty young, but I probably wasn't pretty young. The, yeah, pretty young.
How many years ago was that?
I remember, uh, we were getting ready to do the budget or something.
A half hundred years ago, since you was in college.
Come on, dog.
Oh, golly, yeah. Forty-seven years ago.
That's so.
I'm 66 years old.
There you go, watch your mouth.
Yes, sir. Out of number 15, consideration discussion, possible vote to approve saving the 2026 sheriff and constable fees presented to the Texas Local Government, Code 118.113. Penas are 100, summons 100, writ of attachment 125, writ of garnish 125, writ of sequestration 125, writ of possession 125, orders of sale 100, forcible entry detainer 100, citations, other service fees to serve, 100 citation, citation of publication, 100 citation, serifacius 100, notice 100, notice of publication 100, notice to take deposition 100, order 100, reset to serve 100, subpoenaed dues is taken 100, copy of offense for $5, temporary restraining order 100, temporary protective order 100, distress warrant 100, execution 100, writ of execution 125. Additional fee of 2% of sale price will be charged by constable for sale property. Is that something new? I never heard of that. I never heard there was, that's a fee that's.
Passed.
Passed, I mean, the constable collects it, but I don't know that I've ever received, seen where we received 2% of the sales price. If, if, if a guy has a big judgment against him and they end up selling his, you know, his 20 acres down here somewhere and it sells, we're supposed to give the county 2% of that. We kind of follow up on that. I don't know.
Hey, Judge, I think that's, I think that's on a forced sale that the constable's doing. That pays, that pays that all the work that they had to do to get the sale done.
Yeah, but they don't, it don't go in their pocket.
No, it goes in the fund, in the account.
I just don't ever remember seeing it on any report where we actually collected on one of those. That's good, because there is a lot of extra work and, I mean. Next, writ of habeas corpus 125, injunction 100, fingerprint fee $10, all citations and fur process if you mail. To San Jacinto County Sheriff's, Ed B. Byatt, Wes Cedar. Y'all don't serve papers, do you? They didn't used to, they farmed them all out to the constables.
Everyone's always getting one, we have to take care of one.
And you're authorized, and it's probably for any sworn duty, but I'm just telling you, the way it goes, the constables do it. That's always been on there, too. You send them over there, and they pick them up over there.
I wouldn't say anything on that.
Constables come, you say, hey, constable, we got some writs you need to come, or they come by weekly or however often. Okay.
So we need to make the motion?
I don't see any information about being able to go up. It's been suggested to me that we raise some, I, I, you know. I've been here so long, I remember when those fees were about 30, so. I would just be tickled to hear a motion and just leave them like they were. That's just me.
She'd give proof of that?
I'll prove it.
I'll make that motion.
And then I'll second.
I have a motion.
You were like this, I didn't, I was scared.
I have a motion by Commissioner Morris and second by Commissioner Dominy to approve the fees which are, they're raining the same. You can, you can slip any changes in there. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, evidence, you know, it's three, two. Out of number 16, consideration discussion, possible vote to approve the records management archive plan for San Jacinto County clerk's archive fund. Is this a new plan or is it the same?
Same one.
All of them has updated our progress. And I did add for, you know, the sign.
Since it's all the same, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Morris.
I'll second.
I have a second by Commissioner Dominy. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, evidence, you know, it's three, two. You got one on the other side? There he is now. Yeah.
I got the blue pen, John.
I like it. So, a little too much ink flows out and then I've got a big wall. I accumulated one or two that, that were fine, and I really liked them. Out of number 17, consideration discussion, possible vote to approve, to grant a variance for Kenneth Cobb and Gail Cobb to the division of two tracks. One 4.67 acre track and one 3.10 acre track. Out of a 36.5 acre track in the Michael B. Menard survey abstract 36.
Does Mark help you about this?
Yeah, he, he, he's an out-of-pocket, but he, he asked for the R to put it on here. It's still, I don't know. It's pretty straightforward. I have to look a little more and see. Hanging tree, that's an outlaw ridge subdivision.
See, they got all these minutes all right away, they're printing. All that looks good.
I think so, it's in subdivision, so it's not like we're, be sacred, because it looks like. So. It, it touches Hanging Tree Trail.
Yep.
Definitely east, maybe there's a mountain. Did you see that? I got chopped up by, was there an actual? Maybe it's a copy of a flat thing. Maybe it's not chopped, but I think that's as big as it is. Yeah, I guess that is as big as it is. I want to see. What I see shows the 4.67 acre track. Where's the, where the water? Say, 134.
It's a flat stage.
About 36 acre flat.
Oh, I mean, I thought, oh, there it is.
There, there, yeah, right there. Got a 36 acre flat.
Okay, Hanging Tree Trail, it's a, this is a corner. Wait, is that, is that in subdivision? This is not part of the stuff, it's not part of it. But it's at the corner where Hanging Tree Trail hits 9A. The second track actually touches. Because Mr. Cobb apparently owns 36 acres on the highway there. Yes. Behind him is the coaster track. Lake Livingston Ranch LLC, that's the bus that all the retirement coaster in it. They, they usually, the donor, I think, is usually here.
Yeah, I can see, I can imagine, I was going to tell you.
Kate Jones' property of theirs, that 3.10 acre. It's like they got the, like you said, it's a 400 reason, right?
Taking a road running high.
Yes, sir. Doesn't give me any help, for me.
I'll make that motion, good for you.
I don't think it gives the commissioner any, or he wouldn't, he wouldn't put it on there. Yeah, he couldn't really put it on there.
I'll make that motion, second.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Morris, a second by Commissioner Dominy. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, evidence, you know, it's three, two.
So is this two divisions?
It's a variance for both tracks. Well, I think one of the governments, whatever you're gonna do.
Well, there's two, they have two separate.
It'll make your life easier, or they're gonna attach that stuff to it. That makes it easier, yet they put it all on a flat, I see what you're saying.
Right.
That's probably. I guess they, that gets recorded with that.
Yeah, they'll note and all this will be recorded with that.
Yes, sir. Out of number 18, consideration discussion, possible vote to approve, to sell, sale, one aging tractor, one unused tractor, an asphalt grinder slash rig claimer on Gov. Deals or Renee Bates. You already knew this.
They tried to last time.
We didn't have a memo, but it did, so we're gonna.
That's right, you're right, Commissioner, let me finish. I didn't, I reverted it just like you did. I sometimes amend the language to declare salad, but that's what we're, I mean, cert. And if we get to the motion, it's where I want it says, declare cert plus itself. Anyway, let me finish reading. One, unused tractor and asphalt grinder rig claimer on Gov. Deals or Renee Bates. See attached photos, I brought you the, one, one, 2001 Maxi Ferguson model, horn to 432 wheel drive, 38, 3784 hour, three sink, one road bridge, 81306, serial number ending with 4 on five, opening bid to be 13,000. For number one. Number two, 2023 Case IH Maximum 150 tractor with 169 hours. Pre-serve one road bridge, 81306, serial number ending with 01976. Commissioner Dominy approved selling, sale, now will be divided between precinct one and two, road bridge runs, just not utilized, opening bid to be 140,000 minimum. Number three, 2022 Valentini L 2300 asphalt and grinder, reclaim the block for precinct one and three road bridge, opening bid to be 60,000 minimum. I thought we were gonna save the world with this thing. I mean, it's gonna regrind, we're paying people to do it, but it may not be quite enough machine to do it the way that, I mean, I don't know probably why we bought such an operation in that, but we probably got a better way to do this stuff.
If you bought a machine.
I'll make a motion to surplus all three, the 2001 Maxi Ferguson, the 2023 Case, and the 22 Valentini Brighter, and the Brighter.
Speaking of, the men on business.
Oh, the men on bid on the 2023 Case, 140,000 minimum. And the Brighter, the men on bid, 60,000, and the 2001 Maxi Ferguson, 13,000 minimum.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Commissioner Dominy, second by Commissioner Morris, so. Number one, it's a two-wheel round tractor.
Yeah, it's a 500.
Excuse me. It's a cab tractor.
So I can say neither one of these are step rounds, neither are all my rounds.
Sure, one you would, one two, a ride tractor. Cab tractor, it's two of that, you get that bloody stuff, you're stuck.
That's when you call somebody, gray dog.
I mean, it's probably just my motive, but you're capable of getting stuck, so it's something true, if you're doing, you know, wets, you know, if we've had a lot of, okay. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, evidence, you know, it's three, two. So, it's the. The item said to sell on Gov. Deals or Renee Bates.
Gov. Deals charges the buyer, and Renee Bates charges us.
Both. Aye, same.
Oh, we got first.
But. Seems like, I don't know, we sold some stuff on Renee Bates, and I never thought to sell. We sold some land on there. I know, I know there's a lot of people looks at them.
It went home.
Yeah, yeah, it went, I might as well say it, I'm not sure, and we, we ask it, because that wouldn't be a good thing to say.
And when, it also, when we sold it, it also is gonna have tax dollars, our community will say.
That's right.
I say it's aye.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So, Gov. Deals, if I was getting on there looking for me a deal, it seems to me like you, you get, I don't know if their stuff burns as much as Renee Bates, that's just me, I don't really know. Gov. Deals is more of a, it's all for, uh, uh, government entities, cities, municipalities, everybody bids on.
That's true.
Government stuff, they, they think, oh, I ain't paying that much.
Yeah. Well, Renee Bates, we got them money.
Well, it's put on a name base, if they're gonna sell, then you build a Gov. Deal. Well, it's put on Renee Bates, if they're gonna sell, then you build a Gov. deal.
I'm just, that's just my viewpoint, I really don't, I mean, whatever you guys think, y'all might notice.
That's dumb. I mean, that stuff's so good, I thought.
Oh, did you sell some on Gov. deals?
No, Renee Bates.
I just think it gonna.
We had really good luck with them, nothing against Gov. deals, but if I were selling, I like to buy on Gov. deals, but I don't know that I'd sell my stuff, so.
Well, she put on Renee Bates, that's what they.
All right, Renee Bates is there.
I bet that home tractor be going over for a while.
Uh, if it doesn't go with the minimum bid, do we have to bring it back to court?
I didn't hear you.
If it doesn't go.
You have to bring it back and lower the bid, or sell without a bid, I, I guess. A hundred and forty thousand, we paid a hundred and fifty, I think, but.
You oughta buy that one second. You got a hundred forty, I'm gonna pay fifteen percent, so, man, you make money.
How many horses, a hundred and fifty horse tractor?
Yeah, and I thought about buying it out for side load, but it got really slow.
Isn't that too heavy?
To the guy said.
Oh, the windows out, it, oh, it's over here, I wouldn't do that.
Do you need, I, I got a brand new seventy-five horse with cab, overdrive, low. Zero percent interest, and it was, uh, fifty-five, fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, that's a deal, look, there, that's a hundred thousand less than, so, to go up to a hundred and fifty is a hundred, that's a hundred thousand more dollars, I just, oh, gosh.
I got two thousand five with nine hundred hours on a cab, me a hundred five horse, a bonnet. A one brush all back, we're getting that one.
Yeah, that ain't no hour, just a square, I broke it, I did a good hit.
Uh, they're defending so to me.
You're, you're, the senior commissioner took me in doing that, we went up to the, between.
All right.
They got, they bought three when I submitted.
That's the precinct or the commissioner?
Commissioner, just per, personal.
Okay, okay.
We had to go all the way to Stephen, but, um. All right, let's move along here, we'll hope that sells like, like that. Number nineteen, consideration discussion, possible vote to approve five new tasers for deputies.
Have you got test them tasers out? That's correct, correct. Mr. Johnny?
We need it, take five new tasers, we, uh, I'd like to table it.
Oh, I get a question, too.
Make a motion to table it.
Say, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's two.
I'll sort of get tested out, Rick.
Well, you know, uh, I'm having some others come in, I'm gonna put on the next agenda, which will be a better tension.
Okay.
And it will, we can light it up, several times.
Oh, really?
All this, hey, all this says on here is purchase five new tasers. Don't say which ones or whatever.
I'll take that later. That's why I table, I'm gonna bring it back.
Just telling you, I'm about to have a work around here, so we're saying you can buy it now.
No, we, we can't buy it now.
Okay.
I, I went, I went off of a bid that somebody gave me without research, so when I researched it myself, I found out there were some problems with what he gave me, that's why I wanted to table it.
Okay, do you know what the other ones are, a lot of them is under fifty thousand?
It'd be under fifty thousand, yes, sir. And it will be under the grant SB.
Yeah, see, they have, they still have some money under SB twenty-two, and they need to spend before September third.
I think what he's trying to say.
On the buy order?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the only company, so.
If you got that, what he's trying to say, we could probably do it today.
Okay.
So you've seen your.
That's what he's trying.
It's seven, it's seven tasers, not five.
Well, that's okay, we can. If it's, you're saying you can buy seven from another vendor for.
It's the only vendor.
Listen, let me finish. What I'm hearing is you can, you found a deal on seven for about what you thought you was gonna pay for five.
No, sir.
Less than.
More than, that is, the quote that they gave me was incorrect.
They'd too good to be true.
That is correct, sir, that's why I researched it and found out that somebody.
How much is these seven tasers gonna cost?
Thirty-two thousand dollars.
Are you asking us to approve that?
Under the SB.
Twenty-two.
SB twenty-two.
On your SB twenty-two, money's still there, and it's on the buy board, right? With one of those purchasing calls up?
Do you have an agent taser if you want?
Well, the, the old ones were P twenty-six, this is a P seven, and it's, uh, it gives multiple shots, and it's the newer version with the newer software, that's why it's more, you have to buy the new, all the new equipment for it.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so, we're just gonna ignore the table, have a motion by Commissioner Morris.
Seven.
Second by Commissioner Dobbie to buy seven tasers for thirty-two thousand, usually seven, ten, bill twenty-two, huh? Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it, so disregard the, cut table, we took it right back up, basically. Out of number twenty, consideration discussion, possible vote to approve renovation of Arena Tapper. What position is she in?
She was, uh, no, she was with the auditorium's office, and now she would like to come to work at the gym.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Have a motion by Commissioner Morris, and second by Commissioner Dobbie, how long ago was she at the auditorium?
December, back in December, is when she left.
She didn't have no license, it's not like she had accumulated no confidence.
Oh, but she had, she didn't have any confidence.
That was the intention of that policy anyway, we got, you know, they were killers, eating us up on.
No, I'm taking a chance on it.
Any other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it, it's you know, it's three, it's.
I, I, I just follow my lead.
Out of twenty-one, consideration discussion, possible vote to approve the equipment purchase request for Operation Lone Star Tax Force Grant. Elaborate?
Yes, sir, and these are, uh, some test reload, they're just basically, uh, some ammo purchases and for some standard things, like when we do our search warrants on houses, and we have to go in, and they don't wanna come out.
Like flashback, yeah.
Yeah, sir, it's more of an equipment like that.
Like a flashback.
Yes. And we got enough for practice, so we can practice to make sure that we do it properly, without just learning on the job.
Sub total seventeen thousand, whoop, you're not gonna spend seventeen thousand, uh, molded car seat or whatever. That's what it says right beside it, I understand. All right, we ain't got that many cars at a hundred dollars a truck, ninety dollars a truck. Why does it say that? Where, where are you looking?
It's on the shopping cart.
On the shopping cart, there.
It's, it's, uh, we're gonna change out of the page.
It says, here's a picture, ninety dollars, and over to the side, it says, sub total seventeen thousand four seventy-five.
It's just.
I'm surprised, Mr. McCoppin, we, we, we should be a little bit more forceful in what we're doing here.
Oh, here we go, oh, okay, we're looking at two different.
It's, it's.
All right, number twenty-one, all I got is said, equipment purchase.
Correct. Then you got, molded seat, board and arch are still for the OLS guys, that's so they can hold all their equipment on there, they're ninety dollars apiece.
How many of them we buying?
We are buying a total of. That's the subtotal for everything, but that, we're only getting.
I got two sheets, and they don't have seventeen thousand four seventy-five off. Sixty, twenty-eight dollar handcuffs, that's, look like some drawers or some britches or something, I don't know. Maybe they're boots.
That's just saying, break them, we want to get them.
You're right. And then it says night visions, uh, Monoc or Night Vision, thirty-four ninety-five each. Monoc, if I buy that. You gotta tell us what you're buying, I, I'll have other information.
The Night Vision, you know, it's pretty explanatory, they sit in a car, and they can watch a house in total darkness.
You guys don't know how many of them you want.
Oh, it's gonna be one, one for each, each, uh, each auction, because that way they're not swapping back and forth. Because if I send two guys to one place, and we have two guys at another place.
I don't care, you, you gotta give me a number, so.
I made a number, I made your case, I was asking.
How many do you propose?
It says five.
It's five, it's one per, it's one per bid.
But nothing says that, is it, or?
Okay.
I'm up here trying to be as transparent as.
Oh, it's got a five, written right on top, on the next page, you can talk to the next page.
Because, I'm the one the camera's focused on.
Right. There's a number on the front.
I didn't see that. Five.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I see that. Five of those is seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Five of Night Vision. Thirty-four ninety-five apiece. Seventeen four seventy-five. See, what I'm looking at, you got these organizers for ninety dollars, and then to the right of it, it says seventeen thousand four seventy-five.
That is the total for.
It's a hundred and seventy-nine of these car organizers, we don't need.
Seventeen, seventeen four seventy-five is the subtotal for everything.
You can tell that by looking at the website, I don't know this sheet.
Right, it's five, everything's five each.
So, we'll buy five of those organizers.
Five of the knockers.
Five organizers. At ninety dollars each. I'm sure we're laying a kind of motion about five Night Visions and five organizers for total seventeen thousand four seventy-five.
I'll make a motion to order five of Night Vision and, uh, how many is that?
Uh, over.
Five for seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars to be taken out of Operation Lone Star.
It says SB twenty-two.
Oh, it says, then I have the Lone Star.
It's Lone Star.
This is Lone Star, yes, sir.
No, I think you're.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Morris, and this is, it's OLS, that means Lone Star. Any comments, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, it's three to zero, so.
Do you have to use all that before certain deadline, to, we're trying to get through that?
Yeah, by that is as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, chief, uh, next, out of number twenty-two, consideration discussion, possible vote to approve quote for nine, two point four terabyte, or terabyte hard drives. Plus shipping, thirty-two hundred eighty-five dollars, that's per each, right, it's nine times that?
No, sir, that is the total.
Total. Okay, I have a question. So. The sergeant is getting, typing on the email right now to send to whatever, to make that, because that's what's got us held up on.
No, we're gonna take it, as soon as I leave you.
You're a good man. Next.
Well, we, we haven't voted on this one.
We have not. Hard drives, what are you talking about?
They're separate hard drives, like on my, uh, just to use the example, my lady is all sex fingers. There's so much data she saves for sex fingers, so.
Look at his mobile.
Yeah, just to plug in the computer.
I got those.
Instead of just overloading our main computer.
Yeah.
So we're trying to save some of our space, because we're running out of space every time we turn around.
Who you buying these from?
Through, uh.
And don't tell me, you're not buying through Quantum, yeah?
No, no. Oh, yeah, uh, we are buying these, but they got the better deal for us. They were cheaper through Quantum than anybody else.
What a mess.
And let me tell you, if we can get a better deal, it's all about saving money.
Well, I ain't doing the shopping for you. We were trying to glean ourselves.
We had gleaned a lot.
Okay.
We were.
So I make that motion to approve for the hard drive for thirty-five pound pack.
That's two point four terabytes per hard drive, that's, that's significant hard drive, uh, what will I know about? I have a motion by Commissioner Dobbie. Second, second by Commissioner Morris to purchase nine hard drives for thirty-two hundred eighty-five dollars. Any questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed, the ayes have it, it's you know, it's three to zero. Mr. McCoppin, is that a good deal for two point four terabyte hard drives, or do you have any?
He's asking.
You're mad.
He's still pushing right now.
I was just looking at, I'm, it's not too bad, um.
You better get that. Fix the door, no, when the valves are getting ready.
Yeah.
So, it says plus shipping, how much could it possibly, they don't have them on hand?
No, no.
You're talking about an insignificant amount of shipping, huh?
Yeah, it's, it's not much.
I didn't bring my phone, right, I'd be on Amazon trying to make a deal.
We've, uh, we've had that discussion with the auditorium, that is not a place we're gonna be buying.
Certain things you do not want to buy.
Number twenty-three, consideration discussion, possible vote to approve quote for AMO for Operation Lone Star AMO.
That's AMO.
AMO.
That's what we were discussing.
That's about AM, AMO. I thought that was something after AM or whatever.
I didn't type this, sir.
Never bet.
I just turned it in.
All right, again, I say, what, how much AMO, what?
Fourteen seventy-seven worth, uh.
Well, it's, I, I, you got me some good, I think, the word here on this.
Fourteen hundred seventy-seven.
Liberty Diamond, I see, Denver car. What's our guy down there on Lower Bridge Road, they don't sell AMO?
Not like this.
I make a motion to purchase the AMO for fourteen hundred seventy-seven dollars.
I have a motion by Commissioner Dobbie. I have a second, I'll say, I'm sorry. Second by Commissioner Morris.
Yes, my solo operation Lone Star, all of it.
Uh, yes. Initiate. What is an initiate?
Like I said, that is for when we go to the house, like I told you before, the flashbang stuff. That's, that's, that's large.
Oh, we're not talking about bullets, yeah?
No, we're not talking like forty-fives and forties, nine, no, sir. We brought that up. This is AMO that normal people wouldn't use.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it, it's you know, it's three to zero. How long you got to jail?
Today.
One twenty-seven, one twenty-seven.
Sorry.
One twenty-seven.
About sixty of them contract. About sixty of them contract?
No, sir. And let me tell you, we got real close. Within a week, we were almost having to send people back because, uh...
Arrested.
My guys are doing so good that we run out of room.
I see they're working, but, uh, arrested.
It's certainly one to the other. They'll stop working or give some people back.
Uh, twenty-four. Consideration discussion possible, vote to approve equipment purchase request for all, uh, Operation Long Star. That's good. We're heading out on my, we got more?
What is that?
This is one more. It's even, same.
I don't know. It's down there twice.
Oh.
Night vision and order.
Yeah, I don't know.
She might already get it down there and I don't know what that is. Twenty-eight, twenty-eight dollars for some Smith and Wesson's, Smith and Wesson.
That's mine.
Huh?
Tangle. That's cheap.
It sounds like. So no action under twenty-four. I have a twenty-five. Consideration discussion possible, vote to approve amended memorandum between San Francisco County Sheriff's Office and ICE.
And also, I also handed y'all a second one because what has happened is the original one y'all approved, nobody could find it signed. So I needed it signed. Okay, so...
What do you mean?
Nobody can find it.
Where's that? Is it all? Well, this ain't...
And then while we were doing that, putting that on the agenda, ICE guy showed up and explained to me on the task force model agreement, which we already had signed, there was a typo under the public law.
And you told me that.
That typo was two seventy-six. And it's actually two ninety-six. So it really doesn't change anything other than the, the lawyer said we had to change that number. So I need both of them signed. Even though they've already been approved, I just need them signed.
So there's not a one sign floating around by ICE or is it?
No, we, we never could find it. I never did find it, even get, I called, uh, this is where I got, called your, uh, Tracy. I was, nobody can find it.
I believe this was the one that doesn't have a spot for you to sign and had St. Houston on it. So you even said let St. Houston sign it. So we never traded it.
Oh, I just didn't want, I didn't want nothing signed without...
Right.
Yeah. I'm here, I don't wanna hear nothing later on.
I would have put that in under as well, probably get that for this one.
If you'd sign, sign underneath the judge, that would be not, underneath Sam, that would be great. Now, I highlighted the typo here on that when I turned it over.
Well, exactly what we're doing with this.
We were working alongside this federal government when we had, uh, first, when we had individuals that are classified as illegal entry into the United States that we don't process with ICE. And we're able to, with us, to this agreement, if they're in our jail, we can go ahead and get them processed quicker to get them out of our jail into the federal facility. So they're not sitting in our facility. Because the longer they sit in our city, our jail, then that's more we gotta feed and take up space.
How many agreements are you asking us to approve?
There's two of them. We've already approved it, just, there's two. I just need to signature on.
It's different. So one's a memorandum of agreement that I'm looking at with ICE.
Correct.
And the other one, the same thing?
It's the same thing. One says it's a task force. It's the one that, it's already been a task force model.
Yeah, I see that.
So we don't need to vote though on the amended, uh, and active?
We probably should if you want.
Well, one of them has never been changed. It just, I mean, it's, I mean, it's signed. The other one has that one digit.
Yes.
Which it doesn't actually change.
So there's really just one agreement, the original version, the method version, and the one that's directed version.
Yeah, it's just, it's two of them.
Why would you want to approve? You only need to approve to agree.
One is for jail personnel. One is for patrol. There's two of them, which are, which is what we're...
How are we supposed to, which one is?
One says task force model.
Yeah, I saw one.
And this is, uh, we done worked out the...
Doesn't matter. All it says is amended memorandum between, I listed the two of them. We can approve both of them.
He sent my office. It's all numbers, same grand, it's not a brand, it's three eighty-seven G. It's all the same thing. Just have two eighty-seven G.
Oh, yeah. Who's the hell you have? Law enforcement agents. Law enforcement agencies. They're gonna cover their travel, housing, and training. Training, what's special. They're gonna pay for the training.
Yeah, they pay for the training. We just have to pay for the towers. Which is a whole...
How much training will you charge?
Uh, we'll be sending the, some of the people, most of the training is like a week long. But there's one school that's like...
They're paying for all the hotel, training.
They're paying for that, we just have to pay.
Yeah, they're working for us, so they'll be a weekend training. Not lost layers, like I mentioned before. It's two... Not lost layers.
No, I don't think about it. It's, I didn't talk to him. They're gonna make sure you get somewhere where...
You just want us to approve y'all doing the agreement? And get a motion to that?
I make the motion to approve both memoriam between ICE and the Sheriff's Office.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gundy to the, to approve the agreement for San Francisco County Sheriff's Department and ICE, uh, for the jailers and the deputies. Second by Commissioner Mars. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. I'll take it, so my certified.
Sir. Well, they, they, some of the trainings globally, so some of the local, some of the onsite training will be, uh, within a week.
Oh.
But, you know, like the long one that you do in the jail, which you have to get on their computers, that's a three week.
Okay. Any opposed? The ayes have it, two hours, three to zero. All right, we have a verbal for y'all. We, this we have copied.
I am not touching. A shoe would pop me out of here.
There they are. Sam's gonna sign, the sheriff's gonna sign, and then they'll send the ICE, ICE will sign.
That's right. If they have to sign off, then I said, guys, and they signed it. And then I'll tell them to send us a copy. Have a complete sign.
We just did it, number twenty-four, and number twenty-five. So twenty-five is consideration discussion possible, vote to approve amended memorandum between San Francisco County Sheriff's Office and ICE. That's the one that had the title. So we've done that, and approved in one motion. Still need it. Yeah.
Love this, I love this.
Y'all gotta get them signed.
Like I said, I, I, I hand them back over to the ICE guy. They get them signed by them, and I'll have him fax me a copy back or email me a copy back signed. And I'll let him just forward them.
Well, I said to you, I would think you'd want to sign, or you might wait for him to return. But I know we had an agreement. It's probably good we did, but it was, I don't think, out of touch. It never actually got through. That for the record is what we approved, because I signed, that's the agreement. Moving right along, item number twenty-six. Time is... There's supposed to be delivery in the park stuff right now.
You tell me to deliver, you tell me to be delivered.
Consideration discussion possible, vote to approve necessary actions regarding matters pertaining to the community court.
Oh, wait a minute, there's things online, dude.
Only thing we got left is twenty-seven. I want twenty-six right now. We don't have a park, we don't, that is not here, you know, she's over there going through the, I think is what I was telling, they deliver quarter approved of the company. Very nice piece of park equipment, mighty two thousand dollars, it's being delivered today. We're going through all the components, making sure that all the parts are there and you get a free delivery like that so you can... You gotta do that within thirty days or you can't, oh, hey, y'all forgot the screws for the bolts, you got thirty days to do that. I didn't, I follow them, I was supposed to get a text when it delivered, but if we all go over to the corner or, but we go, you know, if you want to ride out there, I'll ride with you. Fine with me, I'm just telling you what she said. That's probably going on.
He said, all right, listen.
Yeah, I know, I sent a guy with it up the gate for him. Because they're putting it in our building. It's being secured in our building, so that's next to it.
Yeah, that's good. You think somebody would take it? You know, we were, we were, uh, yeah, probably. We've been trying to, uh, in the past, we maybe shifted, but we, we appropriated money twice to build that out. We couldn't, we couldn't get access, maintenance was not allowed in there to build.
Yeah, not by itself. With company, because we have evidence.
Point is, we can't get in there to work, or how the hell we gonna fill it out?
What do you say?
I ain't talking about you. Giving you a history lesson. Y'all wrote action on twenty-six, twenty-seven, consideration discussion possible, vote to approve necessary actions for purchases of the Operation Long Star. Is there something else?
Yes, sir, there was two other items that didn't get, technically didn't get added to your agenda.
I put it in the agenda early, and you didn't get it there in time.
No, these were there on time, sir.
What is your point? It's, it's, it ain't on there, you don't get handled, chief. So every time you come up here, you wanna fuss, because, well, I sent this and I sent that. Why would I purposely not put your stuff on there?
I don't think anybody purposely, I think...
Well, I don't know why you keep bringing it up. It's like a broken record. Everything that I got, we put on there.
Okay.
So we're trying not to have them to catch us all, but if you wanna keep talking about what I did not put on there, you had to fall.
All right, one is for regular ammo, which is listed, this is just regular training ammo for the deputies to practice and shoot and qualify.
And what fund is that out of?
That is just our, oh, that is just our regular funds, sir. I mean, I can't, I can't shoot, we're not, I wouldn't expect in a long shot paper, uh, or regular deputy's ammo.
This says...
Why does this need to be on the agenda for you to buy bullets?
Well, I just wanted to make sure.
I think it's trying to be really transparent.
I was trying to be, I'm trying.
Are you gonna, every time you buy a new tire, you gonna put it on the agenda?
So this isn't how it...
Is it over thirty thousand dollars?
No, sir. I'll take care of it, sir.
What's that?
Don't need to go down there?
I don't know what he's holding. It's just bullets. I don't think it needs to be...
I think it true, he said.
And what's the other one?
The other one was, was for the server to get rid of the, uh, server that we're paying Quantum for and get rid of the, because the one we got from Jasper did not work. That they gave us for free, but it's junk. And, uh, so we researched it and we found the server so we can quit paying Quantum, uh, two thousand or twenty...
I'm not far that, but it's, let me see what you have.
How much is it?
It's four thousand.
Four thousand. And that's coming out of Operation?
No, that's what our server for, our, our computers, you know, our... And then when we quit using that, uh, software, we can also use that server to replace some of the older servers that we got on our system.
A rack server, that's one that would be what they got all these days. I've seen them in some places in, uh, do we have any others already?
Oh, we have, we have several.
I think we do, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So I make the motion, because I'm...
All right, hold, hold, please. Have any, I said, please, if you just want. You have money in your budget to buy?
No, sir, I don't think so. But it's better than spending money to, it's better than giving the money to Quantum.
That's the wrong answer.
I'm trying not to spend money to Quantum.
We don't have a, we, we don't have a lot out of the buy unlimited things for Quantum, where you...
How much is it?
It's four thousand dollars.
That's the one, yes, yes, ma'am.
I told you, Mike, I told you.
I'm all for doing that, believe me, I'm all for it. Have you had to buy them?
I, I will help him buy them.
Have you had to buy them?
Have, you know, I haven't had a, a different line or something.
You're gonna have to do a budget amendment to do that.
Whatever.
We can do that at the next meeting, but you don't need our approval to buy computer stuff. I don't think, if you bought over fifty thousand dollars worth of these...
No, sir, that's my own.
Now, in general, we've spent way over fifty thousand on computer stuff, but... This is something you need. You don't, you don't need court approval to buy them, if you got the money. And I appreciate your, where you're going about it, but we don't, you don't have to have approval.
He's gunshot, I'm curious. Yes.
Believe, I appreciate you bringing that thing forward, I, you know, I'm...
For the long now, I don't have the smaller ones. Don't do that again.
Well, you gotta use common sense, though. They're, they're actually Wilsons, a gal that bought a bunch of Victoria Secrets under garbage. Expected us to pay for it. Ray, were you on the court one that happened?
I don't remember that, though.
It happened.
Might have been before my time.
I'm thinking this side is just going in on the court.
Yeah, I was gonna say, your ammo that we bought out of the L E O C D, but.
Okay. But you're through that with the L O, L O R.
A Long Star, I don't think some even brought under Long Star, I, if you're used. So we do it under the schedule out of here, twenty-seven.
I just been informed by County, uh, auditor, that the ammo that I was requesting can't be purchased out of the Long Star front.
Because it's for training purposes.
Correct.
Well, what did we say it was coming out of? Unless that, if, if you want to, you can.
I would love to. I would love to.
Great, 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 great. You had two items, I'm, I surely hope I don't find one in there on our desk. So was there an item, a server, or what else?
This, China bullet.
China bullets. Ammo.
If you buy something, uh, if you're buying something smaller items, but it's coming out of the grant, it does need to be. But that's why I put this item number twenty-seven up here. It's on every agenda. It says, consideration discussion possible, vote to approve necessary actions for purchases under. By the way, you ain't got to send fourteen different bills. You can do it all out of here. Just, at the meeting, you have to say, you know, the public wants to know what we're, what we're buying.
Correct.
That was the intention of putting that on. But it probably is more transparent doing it, the way you're doing it. Anything else, chief?
No, sir.
All right, let's move back to item number six, consider approval of plans.
Crystal, anything? Crystal, anything pop out at you, you noticed?
Uh, everything I had questions about already went.
I, I looked at it, figured out it, see, that's what popped up, made. Since you're taking that, man.
Is that here a motion to?
Yeah, make a motion to pay the bills.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mars. And I have a second, as I permissioned, Don. Any questions, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I said that you have a three to zero.
I get my ding knees, so when they gonna do this on you? I'm waiting on the phone to ring. Just keep us informed, Ray.
Item number, uh, seven. Consider approval of budget amendments for revenue shortage.
Yeah.
Number eight, consider approval of minutes of meetings of July ninth, July twenty-third, budget works out, July thirty.
You signed, you ordered it, too.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. So they can, I'm gonna make it art, let's sugar it, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it is, my blood sugar. I get a motion on the minutes.
I'll make the motion for three minutes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Don. Second, by Commissioner Mars.
Sorry, it's just.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I said that you have a three zero.
No, no, aye is here, or first or second motion.
No pressure.
Thanks, here, let's go across the screen. And see if he missed the other.
Mr. Dieter, we don't, we don't like you a lot of times, come here, when you go out, I wish you, I miss you in your day. We all, we all miss you in your accident.
Hopefully, it's not gonna be long.
I hope so, I really do. My thoughts and prayers are with you, everybody.
Thank you, Don. They're gonna do it at Texas Children's. They're gonna do it at Texas Children's.
I'll, I'll taste your bucket, I'll say.
After, cause after it's posted, it's too.
All right, we don't actually know.
Item number nine, receive and consider approval of July twenty twenty-five departmental report. Feature of technical officer, sheriff, county clerk, district board, justice of peace, constable, resident, cargo marshal. Agro lot engine health care, nine one one, addressing permanent cargo marshals, no met. Veterans officer, and precinct sanitation report.
I didn't get agro lot extension or veterans.
Veterans, I got veterans.
Okay, you did? Okay, I didn't. Am I to come yesterday, I just didn't?
Please, can't wait.
So which other did you get? You have a?
I think, uh, I got, actually, I don't want to throw this down. I think I got all nine.
All right, is that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Don to approve all the reports of set agro lot. And the second, by Commissioner Mars.
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I said that you have a three zero.
It's not like nobody else who'll make a second, it's gonna be here, Crystal. It'll be hard to figure that out without the.
Interesting, what's your journey?
Oh, I will make that.
I'll check it, close it down.
All in favor, say aye, that you know. Thank you so much, thank you so much.
I knew you were gonna call me out.